I'd like to call to order this special called City Council Meeting for September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Mary Lee, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Luttrell?
Here.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Here.
Hutton?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Welcome and thank everyone for attending. The public will have the opportunity to comment on each item of business on tonight's agenda. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I'll note each time when public comment is welcome. I would now like to ask Vice Mayor Hutton to lead us in our invocation and Councilman Luttrell to lead us in our pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we're grateful that we can gather in this room again to do the work of this city. We pray that you would give us wisdom and discernment as we navigate the ins and outs of all the resolutions and ordinances there before us. We thank you that we live in this great community. We are surrounded by this amazing beauty. Lord, we ask that you help us to do this work in a way that is pleasing to you, in a way that honors you and glorifies you. We ask that you help us to help this city to flourish and to do great things, not just here but in the world. We ask all this in the powerful, the awesome, and the marvelous name of Jesus. Amen. Everyone, please join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one public hearing on tonight's agenda, an ordinance to amend, ordinance twenty-four dash five, changing the previously established tax rate. The public hearing is hereby open and Kelly, you will present on this?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, as you remember at the last meeting last week, council voted on the first read for ordinance twenty-four dash twelve. That ordinance would amend the property tax rate for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five to two dollars and twenty-five cents. It is an increase of point two six three seven cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. As we discussed at the last meeting, there are a number of reasons for this recommendation. I'll go through just a few tonight and then would be happy to answer any questions. And I know Holly Verrin, our finance director, is here to answer any finance questions that you may have. As we discussed at the last meeting, the city has not seen a tax rate increase since, for the last thirteen years. And in fact, the tax rate currently is thirty-six cents lower than it was in two thousand and five. As council heard a couple of work sessions ago from Scott Gibson, our bond counsel, we are in a position at this point where we do have to be considering a tax increase for a number of reasons, primarily to keep our fund balance policy in compliance, which that is having three months of expenses and debt coverage in our fund balance. But we are just seeing, like many other communities across the state and really the nation, we're seeing increases to just the cost of doing business as everyone with their own homes and businesses also are seeing. And we've hit a point where we just, we can't continue to operate without moving forward with a tax increase and keeping the same level of service that we're able to provide at this point. I think our staff does an amazing job at trying to provide the best service possible for the lowest cost possible. And we are always looking at ways to do that in a more efficient manner. I think our brush and bulk collection, although it's been, we've had frustration with some residents on that, but just the change in asking people to call or fill out a form, that's, we're looking at a seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollar savings just in doing that. So we really are looking at every opportunity we have to try and save costs. But there's only so much that we can do to continue to maintain the level of service that we provide our residents and that's expected and that we want to provide to our residents. Something I think that is very key and was discussed at the last meeting was the department analyses that we're completing. Right now, we have a problem, I would say citywide, but we know we have a problem in most of our large departments with our wages for our staff are under what the market is throughout this area. So we are seeing really great staff people having to leave our city to go work for other cities. And we just, we hate to see any good employee leave, but that has a financial impact as well. We pay more when we lose someone than if we would have paid them the market wage that they deserved to be paid in the first place. As an example that I used at the last meeting, but want to share especially with the folks that are joining us tonight that maybe weren't here last week. When we lose a firefighter, paramedic, it costs us seventy thousand dollars just to train that, a new paramedic coming in. That doesn't count the overtime that our staff have to fill, but waiting for us to backfill that position and all of the training time that we have to do. And that's just one example, but it's certainly not the only. So we want to make sure that we're paying our staff adequately and appropriately. It only makes sense. Something else that I really want to hit on is, again, I said before and I'll reiterate, the city is not immune to the market. We've seen a lot of increases in really everything that we do and provide, from the cost of chemicals to treat our water, to making large purchases. We, if we purchased a fire engine back in two thousand and oh five, it was two hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. That now costs us six hundred eighty-four thousand plus. That's a hundred and seventy-four percent increase from oh five to current. And yes, there's inflation, but that's, that's even a lot greater than inflation. Another example, a side loader, a waste hauling truck in oh eight was a hundred and, almost a hundred and five thousand dollars. In two thousand and twenty-three, we had to pay three hundred and twenty, almost three hundred twenty-four thousand dollars for that same piece of equipment. So we're just, we're seeing costs going up everywhere. We've been able to buffer that because of the federal ARPA monies over the past few years, again, as most communities have. And that was, that was helpful. That got us through the pandemic and really this last couple of years since. However, those are done now. We, we don't have those funds available anymore. So we do have to go back to our local tax dollars to fund those programs and capital that we, we were relying on federal grant monies to do previously. So with that, I, again, you have ordinance twenty-four dash twelve in your packet. Staff does recommend that be approved. This is the second read and Mayor, with the public hearing, I'll turn it over to you for that.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to council on this matter? If so, just come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And our city manager, you'll have three minutes and she will keep the time.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are we good?
Sure.
All right. My name is Katie Sword. I live at one oh nine Trey Circle, public educator, Bristol enthusiast. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you about the potential property tax increase. My, my own personal property tax increase based on the assessed value of my home, based on the information the city put out, is twenty dollars. This is what I am thrilled my twenty dollars will go to. Public educators, law enforcement, city hall and everyone that works there and works their butt off for me. Steel Creek Park, these are things I value, so it may not be what y'all value. Steel Creek Park, all the parks in our area, the maintenance, the trails that goes into those parks, the staff at those parks and the nature center, oh my gosh. Bristol Rhythm and Roots Reunion, the city supports that every year. Thank you personally. It has changed my life, as every one of you know, it has changed our community. Downtown Revitalization, if you haven't been lived here very long, downtown wasn't the greatest place about thirty years ago. It is now the cute jewel magnet of our community and that is thanks to our cities. The new schools, I'm in one, thank you very much for it. Parks and Rec and Slater Center Programming, I know many senior citizens and retired teachers count on that programming. It is so important. Sewer Maintenance, garbage collection, SRO salaries, I'd like those to remain in place. The Bristol Public Library, Maintenance of Public Works and the poor guy sitting on a golf cart in my neighborhood right now while my roads are redone. That's a city employee. Thanks for that guy. In the future, with property tax increase, these are things that I would love for the city to explore. Bike paths, walking paths, an aquatic facility, à la old Haynesville pool. I know we're not going to fix Haynesfield, but aquatic facility, a community aquatic facility, we don't have a pool. We need one. Continued or increased arts support, recycling, because I'm a tree hugger, and support for any future landfill issues. I hate to bring that up, but it may be coming. And any economic progress. I fully support the city chasing after any sort of skilled labor, but no one's going to come here if we're falling apart. No one's going to come here if our schools are old. So I know property tax increases, I teach these kids, I teach these families. It's time and I hate, I don't like asking for people in our community to pay more, but I value this stuff. And personally, I could not say something about it. So thank you very much for all your work and good luck with this.
Thank you.
Miles Vance, three oh six Circle Drive, lived in Bristol thirty-four years. Guys, I spoke to you all last week and I appreciate you allowing us to speak again tonight. I'll mirror what somebody said last week, you guys have a tough decision and I understand that. And I respect every one of you all on this board doing it. But I do have a couple of questions for the, for the move that we're doing. This tax increase, is it, is it going to be something that next year that we're going to have to come back and look at and say, oh, we should have done more? And I'm, you know, like she said earlier, you know, we want a community center with pools. We have wonderful policemen, wonderful firemen, wonderful public works people. We have wonderful council members. We have wonderful people all in our city. So my question is just this, is I know that we don't want to raise taxes and I know that and I know that our city's been great at not raising taxes, right? But I also understand that we live in a, like hers was twenty dollars a month. I believe mine's going to be maybe less than that. I feel like that whatever that less than twenty dollars is going to be is, if that goes to a community center pool, if that goes to capital projects like you've spoke about, if that goes to keeping our men and women in uniform. I truly believe, like I said last week, that, you know, unfortunately, costs go up and wages go up. And unfortunately, you have to raise prices and you have to raise taxes. So I know that this, this decision is not an easy decision by any of you guys. I know that a hundred percent. But what my question is, is is it going to be enough to sustain us in the next two, five years? Or is this just something that's going to, I wouldn't say put a Band-Aid on it, but I would say, I mean, honestly, is it going to put a Band-Aid on it to the point where we can't do anything else? Those are my questions that I would have. Is, is this going to do any new projects? Is this going to fund our teachers, right? She's a hundred percent right. I've been in schools that are falling down and my child goes to an elementary school and my son goes to the high school. And so, and I understand you guys don't fund the teachers. I understand that. I understand how that works. But you guys do have the option to be able to help fund the schools, being able to do their projects, because I believe that would be a capital project because that is the future of Bristol. So those are the questions that I have is that, and I think every one of us should know that, is if our tax increase is going to be just a one-off or are we going to be in the same position next year? Because guys, I don't feel like prices are going to come down. I really, really don't. Thank you all for your time.
Hi, my name is Christine Johnson. I live at two oh five Woodbine Road in Bristol, Tennessee. Pardon me, I'm not a good public speaker. I haven't planned what I'm going to say, but I did need to say, I moved here seven years ago from Los Angeles looking for a good place to live because that wasn't. This was a good place to live. I wanted to stay a good place to live. Money is extremely tight for my family. We have leftovers half the time. But you need to raise taxes. We need good schools. We need sidewalks. We need good public transportation. Pedestrians need to be safe. We need ADA compliance. It's about sixty years overdue. That's close to a hundred if you're rounding. We need a pool. We can't raise a generation of children that can't swim because then we'll have adults who can't teach their children to swim. Right now, that's what's going on. We need good schools. We need this tax increase.
George Link, eleven hundred Georgia Avenue. Just kind of reflect the sentiment of the previous speakers. Taxes in general, they're never fun, but, and it's never an easy decision, but it's an investment in the future. I grew up in Bristol and I've often heard the term Bristol will always be in limp mode. And I never really fully agreed with that, but as we progress forward and I see the investments the city is actually making, it's like we're actually getting up and starting to run. And I really appreciate the investments the city has been making. I have looked at the line items. I am the boring guy who reads the financial reports. As somebody who works in private industry and does large capital projects, the numbers are pretty reflective of reality. And I appreciate, that's not just a testament to you all, but it's also a testament to the staff you have working for the city. I mean, that's, that's some heavy due diligence right there. I've also saw some line items and I appreciate y'all's investment in a grossly underserved community for this next year. And we're going to continue to do our level best to do the private side of it and have a private public partnership. As to allude to Ms. Sword and Ms. Johnson's comment, I know both of you anyway. I had a mom come up, we're going to start grant work for Aquatic Center and see if we get the city some free money. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and look up now, Mark, you can. I'm Mark Vance, two oh one Blue Ridge Drive, Bristol, Tennessee. What I want to say to each one of you all, five city council members that are elected by the people of this city. We got here and you're having to deal with the situation. The question is, should you've ever got to this point to have to do what you're having to do? No. In two thousand and twenty-two, the issue could have been addressed and this tax increase wouldn't have had the impact on the people of this city that it is going to have. And I saw, I told several, I told several city council members when they did it, I said, I will be in front of you if you raise my taxes double digit because you should have dealt with this in two thousand and twenty-two. But that's irrelevant. We've got to go forward. I want to encourage all five city council members to vote to do what's right and do it as a majority. I don't care if it's election year, I don't care what it is, but I respect people that are willing to take a position and stand behind their position because it's the right thing to do and not a political reason of doing something. People are tired of politicians. They want to see people elected in office that's going to make the right decision. Do I agree with this tax increase being the right decision? I don't think you've got any other choice. We've got ten vacancies in the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department right now. We heard Kelly speak about the cost of hiring and training people. I've been there. I've been a department head with over a hundred employees and an eight million dollar budget. I understood of having to constantly spend money to train people and getting the county government to step up and do what's right. It's hard. When you have a revolving door of people going in and out, it makes it hard to keep the quality of services at the level that the taxpayers of Bristol, Tennessee deserve. Second thing I want to talk about the vision. I would assume about every one of us sitting in here is over forty or over fifty, maybe over sixty. The future of the city of Bristol, Tennessee is not with me, it's sixty-four. The future of Bristol, Tennessee is my children and my grandchildren and these other young people in this community. I was talking to a gentleman over at your Public Works a minute ago. Him and I have some connections way back, a people. When I grew up Cedar Valley Pool, Haynesville Pool, that's where us kids made friends with each other. That's where we grew up together. That's where the memories, people that moved out of our area, they grew up and lived here and moved off. And for many, many years, we've talked about how people grow up, go to college and they never come back to Bristol, Tennessee.
Your three minutes.
I've got three minutes. I'm going to close up. Listen, think about the vision for Bristol, okay? Think about the vision. Make it right, guys. Come up with an aquatic center. Come up something for these younger people. Because the future lies in our children, our grandchildren. It doesn't lie in us. So it's important right now as a city council member is to make the right decision and move forward. And I will admire you all jointly and unitally standing up to do what's right in this vote. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim McCall. I live at two sixteen Bluff City Highway. So I have a couple of questions for you. First off, I understand what these folks have said concerning taxes. Me personally, I believe in conservatism, conservative-ism when it comes to financial responsibility. So I look at it this way. If you don't have the money, you don't spend it. So just as an example, we're doing a sidewalk project on Bluff City Highway. I realize seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars of that was state funded. Is that correct? Roughly? Okay. So the city of Bristol contributed roughly a hundred and seventy-nine thousand?
I don't know the exact numbers, but...
Okay. According to your twenty-three fiscal budget, okay? So do you all have any idea how many people walk up and down Bluff City Highway? I see on average maybe three, four people. I just recently retired, so I have the time to observe. And to me, the cost benefit analysis of seeing three people on average walking up and down for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar investment, that's, that's not worth the cost. Okay? That money could have been put to use on these kids going to Tennessee High. Okay? See, when the teachers are talking about our future, I understand that, all right? The state, we are thirty-third in education. Our dropout rate, what is it, teacher?
I need the school.
Five percent. Five percent. Okay? We're doing poorly, folks, and that needs to improve. But we can do that if we're concentrating on them. We're spending on average in this state about nine thousand dollars per student. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. That's why I keep leaning on the podium. But what I'm getting at here is we need to have the right focus when it comes to what we're investing in. So...
Sir, your three minutes are up. I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
If you're close to the end, you go.
Okay, yeah, if you don't mind. So unless there's somebody behind me, all right. But I'm not trying to hold you up. But what I'm saying is, I've been here for a little over thirty, thirty-some years now, okay? And I grew up off and on here. My dad was active duty, so, you know, coming back and forth for the summers and what have you. But my point is, I've always viewed Bristol as a bedroom community, okay? And that's unfortunate because Bristol has a ton of potential. But we need everybody else to see that so that we're not looked at as a bedroom community. A place where we can thrive because as in a personal example, I've got a beautiful, intelligent daughter that's thirty years old, that graduated from Tennessee High with honors, four point oh, went to UT, graduated, got her master's and then moved to Atlanta with her husband. And that's where she works. And is she going to come back? Probably not. At twenty-six, she was the vice president in her company in data analytics. You think she's going to find a job like that around here? No. Because we haven't made that kind of investment here to draw that kind of industry. Retail and restaurants are not going to cut it here, okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would?
Miriam Blessing, one sixty-five Millwood Road in Bristol, Tennessee. I'm going to keep mine really short. This is the thing, I can appreciate other people saying, oh, it's only going to affect me twenty dollars a month. Take my word for it, it's going to affect my husband and I a tremendous amount more than that every month, this tax increase. My issue that I have with it is the raising, like the gentleman said, about the raising of taxes this year and then are you going to come back to me again in the following year? To me, it's my understanding that there is going to be property reassessment next year, okay? So with property reassessment, automatically, there's no way that anybody's property has gone down in value, obviously, okay? My taxes are going to go up then. So my taxes are going to go up this year and then they're going to go up the next year too. And that's my issue that I really have with this. That's, that's crazy to me. Pick it, one or the other. You're going to raise taxes this year, then don't do reassessment then. You can't help but you have to do reassessment, then don't raise them this year. You're automatically, the following year with reassessment, going to get more money from everybody. To me, that, it just is crazy to me to have it to double dip like that. I think that just really stinks for the citizens. I think that just really stinks for the citizens of Bristol. It's not a question of whether or not we need other things around here. Obviously, I agree with this guy about the sidewalks. That's crazy. You know, why didn't you use some of that money to help fund your police officers then instead of putting in sidewalks? But for me, I just think if you're going to raise taxes this year, then don't reassess me next year. Because once you raise my taxes this year and you reassess my property next year, you're going to increase me tremendously this year, and then you're going to increase me again the following year. Thank you.
Nick, sure.
My name is Zachary Johnson. I live at 205 Woodbine Road. I'm a Tennessee High student, and on several occasions, I have walked that distance that sidewalks are being added on Bluff City Highway. And it's a dangerous walk. It's not a good look for the city if someone gets hit there. And I sure as heck would not like to be. And thank you for what you've done there. It's impacted me personally, and once I come back from college, I would like to come back to Bristol potentially. And if we keep making these positive changes, I think I can see that in my future. So thank you for everything you have done.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Denise McCall, and I live at 216 Bluff City Highway. My husband and I have lived there for 20 years, and I can say we've never seen anybody get hit by a car that was walking. But my biggest concern is, is that we're getting a tax increase from the city of Bristol this year. It's being talked about that we're going to see a tax increase from the county because that is, that's the bigger picture. People who live in the, just the county, only pay county taxes. We pay double, you know, what other people are paying already. And it does create, you know, a hardship. My husband is retired, so we are somewhat on a fixed income now. He's retired from the Army National Guard. He worked for UPS for 30 years, and people may think, oh, well, that's a big pension. It's not. It's half of what he would make if he was working there. You know, and like he said, I'm in total agreement about industry. You know, our community needs that so that people can come in and know that they can thrive, with the example of our daughter. We have a grandchild. She'll be two in March, and we're getting another one in March. And we would love for them to feel like that they could move home, but they can't. They don't, there's no way that that's possible for them because there's nothing here for them to come home to. You know, the jobs aren't there unless, like he said, retail, fast food. Nobody wants to work for Ballot Health. I'm a nurse. I don't work for them, and I won't. That needs to be changed. But I know that's not in your control. But I, I would ask, you know, there are a lot of elderly people that live in Bristol who are on more of a fixed income, you know, than, than we are. And that's going to hurt those people. A lady that walks by my house every day, and we've become great friends, her name's Regina Pinkston. Her husband passed away. She's on a fixed income. She just had to redo her home loan to get a cheaper payment, you know, because every penny counts for her. So those are the people who are going to really feel the effects of this 13% increase. I'm all about police officers getting paid more. I'm all about fire departments. We live right across the street from the central fire station. My mom had stroke-induced dementia, not only the EMS, but she had to go to the hospital multiple times in a police car because she had sundowners. I really appreciate those guys. If we can show the people that that's where this tax increase is going to go, and it's not going to go to pay for $2.7 million worth of pickleball courts and $5 million to redo a baseball field, I'm all for it.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Next, we have ordinances and resolutions. We have one ordinance on second reading and one resolution to consider. The second reading of ordinance 24-12 adopting the annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year July 1, 2024, ending June 30 of 2025.
Thank you. Mayor and council, this is the item that you just had the public hearing on. And just to reiterate, ordinance 24-12 does provide for a property tax increase effective July 1, 2024, to the rate of 2.25. And it is staff's recommendation that it be approved.
Any questions? Is there a motion to take action on?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 24-12 as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. The public had the opportunity to comment on this matter during the public hearing. Is there any discussion?
I can start, but first is I just really want to thank all of you for coming out. And as you can see, the room is not full. We know there's a lot of people out there who are not happy with this proposed tax increase. But you all came and expressed yourselves, which is, thank you for doing that, and thanks for taking that opportunity. And I know it can be difficult to speak in a public meeting. So really appreciate y'all coming out to speak. I am supporting this tax increase, and I think there's some different lessons we can learn. And one is that looking every year and doing more gradual increases might be more appropriate. Also, as I learned late in life, fortunately didn't totally mess up, but learned late in life, saving at a, well, I found $25 in our son's birthday card from when he was two. He's 45. My husband said, if that $25 had been invested, it would be a significant amount of money. So the same thing with, with us, we have to invest, and we have to do it at the appropriate times because it makes a big difference for what, what that value is a year later, two years later, three years later. So that, to me, is something to really be aware of. I will say that when we didn't do a tax increase, that meant that we all enjoyed lower taxes for a few extra years. So now we don't get to enjoy those if this does pass. So also, I know we're working on our city in many different ways, and we have an economic development team and have different announcements for different jobs that are coming. We hope that some of the amenities will be able to attract other types of jobs, that people will come here and continue to build our community. And I appreciate, I very much appreciate the stats for our state on some of the way that we, how our state ranks with education, with our children, and our state certainly needs to do much better than it does. Our school system does do much better. Our investment here is better than the state's, and that's something that we are proud of. The services in the city, that's traditionally, when you have county services versus city services, that the city services are a whole lot more than what the county offers, that we offer things that you can't get in the county. So that's why that we have higher taxes in the city is to pay for those extra services. So those are a few things, Mr. Mayor. I might want to weigh in with something else during our discussion, but just a few things of note.
Who else?
You know, I appreciate, as, as Council on Fire Department said, folks coming and speaking, this really is a, is a tough decision to make because it, it impacts our entire community in significant ways. And it is a, it is a, it is a challenge, but that's why we were elected to serve the people of this community and to make some difficult decisions, to look ahead. We have looked ahead at some financial forecasts and recognize that we need to make some significant decisions in order to help this city in years to come. To the, to speak directly to the questions about education and other, and aquatic centers and that sort of thing, we have discussed utilizing a significant portion of probably three, maybe perhaps three to four pennies of this tax raise in order, because we're looking ahead as well at our, at our school system, recognizing that there's capital projects that need to be done, as well as we recognize that the county this year, you're right, has raised taxes. They already did nine pennies, but they consistently have done that year after year after year. And at the same time, when they've done that, they have taken money from the city school systems, not just ours, but Kingsport as well. It impacts us, and we don't see an increase in services from the county. We just see higher taxes. And we recognize that we, we value education in this community and realize that that is a selling point when we do economic development. And so we're looking at, you know, actually, we do support, financially support our school system. It's over 40% of the city's budget that we, that, that the, the city wrestle funds. We want to increase that, and we are looking at teacher salaries. We want to help support those things. We haven't made any decisions on that because we have to look at this tax rate first. Because as our city manager has pointed out, we have, we have significant rising costs, and we, we recognize that there are things that we have to do there. We value having sidewalks in this community because as we look at economic development, it turns out when people drive around and look at your streets, they look at your sidewalks, and if they're crumbling, that's a factor. They look at your schools. They do look at industry. They look at all of those things. And we have an incredible city staff that is, have done amazing jobs over, I mean, always. The city of Bristol has been an incredibly well-run city, and it continues to be under our new city manager and our staff. They are doing incredible work, and we're very grateful for them. And we recognize as a city council that we want to do everything we can to support them and help them. But we also recognize that, that we live in a community where some people are on fixed incomes, and that there's a variety of folks. And, and reaching this decision for this tax rate has been, has been lots of blood, sweat, and tears in terms of council. And so we recognize what it does. And so we do appreciate folks coming here and the comments. And I was taking notes as you guys were standing there talking, so if my head was down, that's what I was doing, was really taking pages of notes in what you're saying because it's important to me. I write your names down and what you're saying so I can remember, and I keep those in a file. So your, your comments and what your, your positions and your thoughts are extremely important to the five of us, so thank you.
And I kind of waited to weigh in after Dr. Hutton spoke because I thought it would be interesting to hear what he had to say. Last time I said quite a lot, and I was trying to rein myself in. I'd like to thank you all for coming. It's important. This is what is supposed to happen. For too long, George, I loved your comment about limping along. I've lived here quite a while, and I grew up outside of Nashville. And when I first came here 46 years ago, it seemed like we were limping or hopping on one leg. It was, it was, it was a hard transition for me, and I'll be real honest. Because so many of the amenities that you might find in Atlanta, or that you might find in Nashville, or you might find in Chattanooga, or Richmond, or even Raleigh, simply, we're not here. And in the past several years, we have looked to the future. One thing about voting on tax increases or not is that you have to have a council that's willing to do it. We have not been there for the past 13 years. There have been some that have thought that, you know, we needed to more incrementally take this on. You have to have three votes. Tonight, we're, we're at a crossroads. We've got momentum going. We, Tom Anderson, sitting in, in the back of the auditorium, could tell you the hundreds, if not thousands, of jobs and the tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars that have been invested in the past six years in economic development that have resulted in higher-paying jobs, more jobs. And there are a lot of industries here that have expanded, that have expanded very quietly. And that was their intent because they, what they do is has security clearances. So do we have jobs coming in? Yes, we have jobs coming in. Are they better-paying jobs? Yes, they are better-paying jobs. Do we have the amenities that you would find in some of these larger cities? We are beginning to have some of those. We are working diligently to have more of those. Stills Creek Park is one of the state top parks in the state. We have a nature center there. That may not seem real important to a lot of people, but it is, it now has a research library that the Friends of Stills Creek, along with the University of Tennessee, have worked to implement, that studies regenerative salamanders. That may not seem real exciting, but with our aging society and joint replacement and so many things, it is important. It has its own ecosystem, unlike any, found anywhere else on the planet, and it should be valued and preserving. We have a grant that's going to put a $10 million playground out there for all children. Children with special needs, children with no needs, rowdy children, all kinds of children, as well as adults. So we're excited about that. Pickleball, you know, while some may not value that, it's economic development. I was out of town, I think I told you all last week, and a woman was on the elevator with me, and she said, where are you from? You know, she thought maybe I talked a little different. And I told her I was from Bristol, Tennessee. She said, I was just there for a pickleball tournament. It is one of the best facilities in the nation, and we're looking forward to coming back. There's going to be an announcement related to that that's very exciting. It's economic development. It sells tax revenues. It's people coming in. It's exposure. It's marketing. It's having people that are interested in that coming to our community and thinking they might like to live here. Maybe they'd like to retire here. The baseball, we have, we were the first team in Appalachian League, 1921. We had baseball before we had music. Our high school team is state-worthy. They've done an outstanding job. You talk about providing amenities for our children so that they want to come back. When you restore the Stone Castle, when you restore the Todd Houston Field, when you work to make capital improvements to different facilities across the city, we're telling our students, we value you, and we do value you. And we want you to have facilities that are worthy of your talents, skills, and, and efforts. Our high school field is, how old is it, Dr. Tudor? Is it, it was built in 60, 61? So do the math. It's old, and it's cinder block, and it's a hazard. It's dangerous. And people come in here and they look at what we have, and they're like, oh, it's Bristol. They're limping along. I think we're better than limping along. I think, I think it's time that we, as a community, recognize that just good enough for the general population isn't good enough for anybody. We're better. We should think we are better than just good enough. That's the only way we're ever going to advance. Nobody wants to come and live in a community that's just good enough. It's good enough. The streets are good enough. We don't need sidewalks. It was a 90-10 split grant with the state. A lot of people walk on those sidewalks. I've seen several. And they use that not only to walk to school, but they use that to walk to work. I see the same, and I know where they work. They work at different fast food restaurants. They work at service stations, you know? They're members of our community. I think Dr. Hutton was right. They deserve safe passage on a sidewalk that's decent. We have industry leaders that come here and look around. They go to our schools and visit. They drive around in the neighborhoods. They get out and walk around downtown. You know, we can't be just good enough anymore. We've got to be better than. And so, you know, 13 years in coming, to get where we need to go, we're going to have to drop a shoulder, all of us, and just not be willing to be good enough anymore. That's all I've got to say. I will support this. I have tried to support something like this for the past several years. There are people, oh, the comment was made about being a fiscal conservative. Let me put a dot on that. Being a fiscal... being a fiscal conservative. Let me put a dot on that. Being a fiscal conservative does not mean living at the bare minimum. Being a fiscal conservative is taking the revenues that you have and using them to their greatest benefit for the general good. Now, what we have done is in, because the county has taken consistent tax increases, and realizing that the county was taking consistent tax increases, there has been the thought on council, "We need to hold the line. As long as we can, we need to hold the line." We've held the line as long as we can. And some will say, "Oh, well, you know, now you've got nonsense from the county on top of what you're doing here." Well, go back and look at the county. See how many pennies they've taken year over year through reappraisals, and their pennies are worth four hundred and fifty-four thousand? Is that right?
One penny is four oh six thousand.
Four hundred and six thousand. One penny in the county is four hundred and six thousand. One penny in the city of Bristol, Tennessee is?
About seventy-two thousand.
Seventy-two thousand.
Seventy, is it up to?
So, when you hear these numbers, it's very disproportionate. You know, and I would encourage everybody, please come to our planning meetings. Please come. If you want to be educated and really understand what's happening, come to our planning commissions. You can't show up just once a year and expect to really be able to speak to this to the degree that it needs to be spoken to. I'm not talking about you, George. But I encourage you to come. We're not hiding anything. We're very transparent. But seventy-two thousand dollars versus four hundred and two thousand dollars on a penny, and then to have the county come and say, "We are the ones that should be leading the way and doing more," I find that interesting, because we've held the line for thirteen years, and now we don't have a choice. That's all I've got to say. And again, I'm sorry. I always talk too long.
That's okay.
No, I'll just say that for me is the same thing, and it's nothing to do as, from a political standpoint, I'll say I've been saying this for quite some time. I felt like that for the reappraisal year is looking at this, if we were going to do anything, that would be that time. So, that's still my decision, and it's the same thing that I've said for quite some time, and I'm going to, well, I understand and respect every other member of council, but that's just for me right now. So, is there anything else?
I'll go ahead and just say that I will not be supporting this resolution as well, but I want it to be very clear to all the staff, all the citizens of Bristol, that if this passes, I will be carrying that flag and leading to charge on these projects and programs, because they're very important to our, to our community. And our staff does work very hard. They work very hard each and every day. And that's all I'll say.
There's nothing else, Mary Lee?
Letrow?
No.
Turner?
No.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have Resolution twenty-four dash one thirty-seven, authorizing entry into an operating agreement with Boyd Sports for baseball at Todd Houston Field. Mr. Mike Manus, Means, will?
Thank you, Mayor Turner, members of City Council. First of all, I'll say that I heard a lot, as being a park director here, a lot of encouraging things about the importance of recreation in our community. And we've talked several times over the last few months about the stadium improvements at Todd Houston. We've looked at other locations and to see what would be best for Bristol, when it comes right down to it, what's best for our kids, our youth. And then, of course, if it's an opportunity for Appalachian play, to be at that stadium as well, that would be a great win for everyone. So I want to just spend some time, we've spent a lot of time with Dr. Tudor and her staff, with the school system, which we very much appreciate. But I'll, tonight I just want to share a few things about Boyd Sports, and see if you have any questions. This resolution looks at the operations of the stadium. Boyd Sports comes with a history of success. In two thousand sixteen, they began to operate Johnson City. In two thousand eighteen, they went to Greenville. In two thousand nineteen, they were in Elizabethan. And then in two thousand twenty-one, they were in Kingsport. So this group is doing something right, and they're making successful baseball in these communities work. And so this evening, I would just want to share a few things with you, where we've negotiated quite a bit with them of what we're looking at. When it comes to funding commitment, Boyd Sports has agreed to spend up to two million dollars in the contribution. That would be basically focused on providing artificial turf, a video board, and then construct group sales areas at the stadium. Bristol, Tennessee Schools, again, is one point five million in contribution, and they also have a new lighting system that's worth five hundred thousand. So that's a great expense that we will not have to address. And as of course, the city of Bristol has committed up to five million for the project. Field use, and I'm going to go with Boyd Sports in this matter as Tennessee High and Dr. Tudor again met with us many times. Boyd Sports will have the facility for twenty-four Appalachian League games. Twenty-four of games will be played at Todd Houston from June first, and then through the end of, through the end of July up to August first. After that, the high school will be playing, of course, in the spring. They'll also have fall ball from August through November, beginning at two thirty P.M. So that shared use of the facility is something that has worked in the past for Boyd Sports and in other locations, other cities throughout this region. Recreational use, Boyd Sports will schedule events throughout the year. Some of those will be travel ball tournament play, which will bring other individuals to our community to enjoy our beautiful city that we have here with so much to do in our downtown area. Sponsorship naming rights, this was a win for us. It's a fifty-fifty split. And sponsorship naming rights can get up into the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we could receive for that negotiation and contract. Advertisement, Boyd Sports and Tennessee High will be sharing some of those responsibilities, and they'll be able to sell throughout the year. Concessions is the same way. Boyd Sports and Tennessee High will both be able to generate revenue and bring those resources back to their, to their programs. The city of Bristol, annual lease, we will receive fifteen thousand dollars. And then also, every ticket sold online will receive one dollar, and that's through the state liners' season. Facility maintenance is a shared expense. Boyd Sports will take care of the state liners during their season, and the school system will take care of their, their facility during their play, and then the city will be there to help out in any way that we can. Shared cost is something that's very important, too, down the road. When we look at that, it's going to be a three-way split between the parties, between the cities, the school system, and Boyd Sports. So when we get to a need where the artificial turf needs to be replaced in about ten years, that, that will be shared between the three groups. Utilities is another one that is a shared expense for all three, and the total lease agreement would be for a period of fifteen years. So that is really all I have at this time. Do you have any questions for me?
I've had a couple of calls and asking of, I guess, the impact on that area around, which, I mean, I live behind there and really hadn't thought much about it of, for years. The high school team has been playing there, and I'm not sure of, what would be the difference in the amount of seats that are there now versus when the stadium is?
Yes, sir. So that's a great question. The seating capacity, we're looking at around fifteen hundred seats at that facility. So I think honestly, you're not going to see that much of a difference. When you look at the average total of attendees at an Appalachian League game, it fluctuates, of course, depending on what city you're in. But we've seen anywhere from three hundred and fifty to five hundred on average usually for those games. And then you have bigger games where there's more promotional events that are offered, which you'll have a large crowd that will come out. But right now, City Manager Buzois, we're working with traffic planning, that department, in making sure everything will work out, where you can get in and out of the stadium. And of course, bluff city highways right there as well. So that's a great advantage that we have. But, you know, there is a great respect in the baseball world for not only playing the game, but it's also your neighbors that are around you. That's always taken into consideration. And, you know, there could be events that we decide just not to do because it may impact that community too much. And so, but we understand that. But at the end of the day, it's, we're in a situation, if we want to be the best, which we all want here in Bristol, then we've got to step up and do something to the stadium for our high school baseball team and the youth that will be playing there. And from that, we'll receive rewards along the way.
Is there a motion on Resolution twenty-four one thirty-seven?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash one thirty-seven as written.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this? All right, seeing none. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
The only thing I would say is I think we have an opportunity to really celebrate the history of Tennessee High's baseball, our community. I know y'all did the Viking Hall of Fame induction on Sunday, Dr. Tudor, and I think it was very well-received. A lot of enthusiasm for that. I haven't had the opportunity to go into the field house, baseball fieldhouse, but I understand it is a museum and a tribute to a lot of our history here. And I would hope that as this facility is developed and built, that Tennessee High will have all of that memorabilia in their dressing room, but that we would also have the memorabilia of that somewhere that the public could see some of it, and along with the state liners, because there aren't many communities that have the rich history that we have. I'm also excited for Director Means to be here to take this on. You worked quite a bit in Elizabethan with the facility similar to this, and they were able to provide a lot of alternative activities, concerts, a lot of different things. So I think it'll be a real asset to our community.
I would say, when we first took a look at this resolution some time ago, I had some reservations and questions about it. Over the last few weeks, just especially reading through this draft and seeing the relationship that our city has been working on with our school system, as well as Boyd Sports, and the vision that's for it, I fully support this, thinking that it's going to be a great asset to our community. I mean, the fifteen-year contract with Boyd Sports, I mean Appalachian, Appalachian League, that, and, you know, the revenue that it'll generate is just, I think it's fantastic for Tennessee High, for the city, for the state liners. So I've come a long way, so.
If I may, just out of transparency, many of you know, some may not know, I've had a twenty-three-year association with Major League Baseball, along with college baseball. Please be reminded that this agreement is with Boyd Sports, is not Bristol Baseball. Bristol Baseball will be and has stepped back. So I will therefore support this resolution that I think it's going to be great for our community, and that Boyd Sports will do a fantastic job.
Denise McCall again. What he talked about cleared up a lot of things for myself as far as the baseball. But we do live right across the street, and I know they're planning to fill the pool in. Is that going to be the only parking when we see the increase in people coming to the baseball games? Is that going to be sufficient for those people? It is?
I believe so, yes, ma'am. And that's something we're currently doing now with another department. We're working on that traffic plan and the parking, too. So we've identified right around one hundred and forty-five spots in one location where the pool currently is. And so then you've got some surrounding parking lots, especially at the school.
School.
Yes, ma'am. So the other thing, too, is, you know, you look at this time with the state liners being there, your June first through August first is that window, and there's no school going on during that time. And so those parking lots should be freed up to the parking we need to. So, but we're doing all we can to.
And I'm sorry when I came out.
Oh, that's great.
Whatever.
It's needed to hear you.
I do want to thank you for, because that was very clarifying for myself as far as the signatures and the way that it was going to be broken up. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mary Lee.
Yes, sir. Letrow?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
All right. That's all we have for this special call meeting. Does anybody else have anything?
I'd just like to say again, for all of our council meetings, and sometimes we have controversial issues, sometimes we don't know they're controversial till we get here, but issues that people have strong feelings on. And again, and so sometimes, like for this, we may come with our armor on, not knowing what to expect and being ready to be defensive in our responses, et cetera. So again, I want to thank you all, for everybody for being thoughtful in your comments and sharing. Also, thank you for asking your question and indicating our meetings can be pretty interesting, and certainly the presentations. And I'll say Zachary's been to three recently and is probably going to be appointed to the library board. Be careful when you show up. You might be put to work. But you may find it interesting. And our work sessions so far are not online. These meetings are. Work sessions are certainly the ones that we ask the most questions, that we grapple with the difficult topics. I think we do that a lot here, too, which is healthy and good for the public to see how we interact. So again, I just wanted to really thank everybody. And I've been in this, in this seat for several years, and I really appreciate those who spoke up in support. That's not the norm. So to hear people speak up in support and also to let us know what we need to still be doing or what we want to see in the future warms my heart. So I really appreciate that.
Let's say welcome to the civvies class from Tennessee High.
Yep.
For coming. Welcome.
Glad to share.
Anybody else have anything else? That word.